Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is a Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, August 7th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call.
Mr. Jensen, Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Miscman.
Here.
Mayor Abuosli.
President.
Ms. Menzer, Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. First item this evening is a proclamation commemorating the fifth anniversary of the August 10th, 2020 derecho. Do you want me to come down? Can I read it from here? All right. No one will be accepting this. We're all accepting it. This is for our entire team in our city. So, whereas on Monday, August 10th, 2020, the word derecho entered our common vocabulary as Marion and surrounding communities experienced a historic severe weather event with heavy thunderstorms and wind speeds up to 140 miles per hour that caused widespread power outages and damage to residential and commercial structures throughout our city. And whereas a great majority of structures in Marion sustained some physical damage and at least 225 structures were destroyed or sustained extensive damage. And whereas nearly forty-one and a half percent of trees on public property and many more trees on private property were destroyed, significantly reducing our prized tree canopy and altering our natural environment. And whereas the city and community leaders quickly organized a massive and inspiring disaster response, including debris removal, humanitarian aid, and immediate response to those in need of assistance. And whereas volunteers from Marion and across the nation generously offered time, resources, and compassion to help thousands of families in need in Marion and across our region. And whereas the city's recovery efforts totaled more than $33 million and approximately 1.2 million cubic yards of tree debris and 10,000 cubic yards of construction and demolition debris were collected in Marion. And whereas in the period since the 2020 derecho, much of the damage has been repaired. Nearly 8,500 trees have been planted on public lands and thousands more trees have been planted on private property through partnerships and collaborations with private organizations, community-minded volunteers, and area businesses. And whereas despite the greatest natural disaster in our city's history occurring during a global pandemic, Marion has maintained its momentum and is today on course of unprecedented growth and progress. And whereas the success of Marion's response to and recovery from the 2020 derecho is rooted in the exemplary community spirit, cooperation, and concern for the well-being of people exhibited by our city's leaders, business owners, and residents. And whereas on the fifth anniversary of the 2020 derecho, it is fitting to remember this significant event in our city's history and celebrate the power of community and our city's resilience in the face of adversity. Now, therefore, I Nicholas Abuosli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, hereby proclaim August 10th, 2025, as a day to commemorate the fifth anniversary of the historic 2020 derecho and celebrate our city's recovery and continued progress in shaping one of Iowa's premier communities. Thank you. I felt it was important to commemorate this. I think when you think about where we were five years ago and with the recent opening of the plaza and you think about that space, just that one square block looked like in the aftermath of the derecho and to see how far we've come. And it really erased all signs of that to where it seems like a distant memory, even though it wasn't that long ago. It's, I think it's fitting to recognize it, to remember it, and to celebrate how far our city has come. So, in writing this proclamation, you know, it just brought back a lot of the memories of driving through the community in those few days right after the derecho and seeing the destruction and feeling the overwhelming responsibility, I think, that we all felt as a city team and as city leaders of how we're going to get our community through it. But we pulled through it in such amazing fashion and everybody did their part. And people were working, you know, 20 hours a day, just trying to get our community through it one hour at a time. And I'm just really proud of how we did that, how we set the example for everyone else on what community and what partnership and collaboration really mean. So, thank you. First item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. There will be another portion of the agenda at the end of the meeting for any other comments. And if anyone's here to address council on a matter that is in a public hearing, there will be time during the public hearing for comments. I would like to review the rules of procedure for public forums. If you haven't, if you wish to address council, please fill out the yellow card at the end of the table and give it to the clerk before speaking. Do not approach the dais where the council sits. If you have handouts, we submit them to the city clerk for distribution to the city council. Once you're called forward, please step up to the podium, speak into the microphone as the meetings are recorded. Please try to address the council as mayor and members of council for the purpose of preserving meeting decorum. And please remember that all speakers will have a maximum of five minutes to make their comments. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is imminently threatening to any person or which incites violence or which is obscene. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been previously shared. Speakers and people attending the meeting should not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct that interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. And failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in the removal of the meeting from the meeting. And we appreciate everyone's cooperation and adhering to these guidelines. So at this time, while the public forum is open, if anyone's here to address council, please come forward. Hey, seeing no one's coming forward, we will close this part of the meeting and proceed to the agenda. The consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E2, resolutions 32478 through 32498.
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes items A1 through E2, resolutions 32478 through 32498. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next portion of the meeting, I'll turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abuosli's abstention as follows. This will be items D1 through E1, resolutions 32499 through 32504.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Items D1 through E1, resolutions 32499 through 32504. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries with the mayor's abstention. I'll turn the meeting back to the mayors.
Your Honor, I move to receive and file Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding a request to study and make corrective changes to McGowan Boulevard between 35th Street and 44th Street. This was submitted by Cynthia Wetzel of 3675 McGowan Boulevard.
Second. It moves and seconded to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding a request to study and make corrective changes to McGowan Boulevard between 35th and 44th Streets. Are you here to make a presentation or?
Give a quick one, yep.
Okay, so before we do discussion, we'll take Mike's report.
Yep. So in the council packet available for the public is the detailed TAC memo, the petition, and the eighty-two residents that live in that vicinity. There was some speeding that was captured by our classifiers. There was one crash that was mid-block. That was a one-car non-collision. That was a minor injury. We did give the ATE when we were able to deploy that device on that section of McGowan. And then this one was a little bit different, that we actually had a neighborhood meeting and invited those same eighty-two people to the Public Works facility to kind of talk through what they felt were wins and help understand, based on the petition, explain what a collector's street is, how many cars a collector's street has on it, things like that. I think that helped iron out a lot of the things that maybe they were a little confused about, thinking that the west side is more of a residential street versus the east side acts more like a collector. And that's just as things changed over time. Councilman Brandt was also at that meeting. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, so we'll save the questions for Mike to item D, for item D3, when we get to voting on the on the direction to staff. So right now, we'll take comments on receiving and filing. Anyone have comments on receiving and filing the report? Okay, all those in favor of receiving and filing the report of the Traffic Advisory Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. And at this time, we'll open a public comment period regarding the request to commence a study and make corrective changes to McGowan Boulevard between 35th and 44th Streets. Public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council, come forward. Okay, I understand we have some comments outside the meeting.
Yes, we received two comments in advance of the meeting that I forwarded. First is from Bob Martin. He wrote in support of the recommended tree plantings, but did not want them in the intersections. And he requested additional painting of crosswalk lines. Next comment was from Pat Croshong in support of the recommendations and was opposed to the installation of center islands, which was not recommended at this time.
Okay, and Mike, did you receive any comments outside the meeting?
I did have a gentleman, I don't have his name in front of me, that did stop into Public Works today in person. I talked him through it and he was in support and left a message for Councilman Brandt.
Okay, so seeing that no one else is coming forward for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion. And then we'll take questions from Mike from the city council.
Mayor, I move to direct staff to proceed as outlined in the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding changes to McGowan Boulevard between 35th Street and 44th Street.
Second.
So moved and seconded to direct staff to proceed as outlined in the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding changes to McGowan Boulevard between 35th and 44th Streets. Discussion on the direction to staff. Questions for Mike?
Yes, here.
Oh, go ahead.
So Mike, on the screen here, these four items were prepared. These are the recommendations from TAC.
Correct.
And we're prepared to take action on each and every one of those. Is there any idea about the persistence and longevity of these actions that we would be taking in order to, I guess, fundamentally retrain the behavior set for drivers on the street?
So I will say this globally, and Kitzmiller can always jump into, but speeding is not a McGowan issue. It is not a Marion issue. It's not even a state issue. It's a United States issue since the pandemic. We have not figured out how, when people were used to having no one else on the road and driving at whatever speed they wanted to, we have not gotten the behavior to change nationwide.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point. Okay.
I have a question regarding the resident comment about objection to the trees. So where are we planning, where would we plan to plant trees?
We would make sure that there is site visibility. They didn't want them right at the intersections. We wouldn't put them there where you can't see and make the turns.
Okay, because we do have some of those intersections where there's vegetation growing, I guess, it makes it difficult. So, okay. So that's not part of our plan.
Correct.
Right, okay. Go ahead.
That was one of my questions, is I assume that arborists and whatnot would figure out where the best spot would be for planting. But then evaluate placement of existing speed limit signs. I know in the meeting with the neighborhood, we talked, there was talk about potentially adding a couple of signs. Is that, was that discussed by TAC of?
Yeah, I mean, well, the biggest thing was, I believe, coming off 44th and not having it close enough to 44th, but we have to far enough away that that churning movement would then see it once they're straightened out. But yeah, we'll look at the it-in-hole and see if it needs to be more spaced. Just because the sign there is there does not mean that they're going to follow it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a police force.
I always, and I brought this up, I think I brought it up at the meeting, now I don't remember. The electronic speed limit signs that, you know, give you the speed and then tells you what your speed is. I think those might be good for putting, if new signs get put up in that stretch, something like that could be done too.
We would need direction if that is a much higher cost. Regular speed limit is probably fifty to seventy-five. I don't know what those would be. I assume we could get solar panels, assuming there's not enough trees. That would be something with the speed feedback trailer. We do that for a temporary time. Every study that I've seen only knows how does the traffic behavior change those first couple of weeks. A month after watching that sign flash, you become immune to it and it doesn't have the same impact as it has. That's why we are suggesting the speed feedback trailers. That way we can keep moving them around and bring them back. So we can take them away, bring them back, and keep cycling them throughout the city.
And both, both would be good too.
When it comes to the street trees, I think that's a calming measure we've looked at from safer routes to school and some of the Blue Zones pieces that people will drive slower if there are trees not looking like it's wide open. So if that's at all possible, love to see that happen. That's not McGowan through that section. It's become, I think it's like, people are like water, right? You're going to go the quickest way and kind of the way that makes sense. Was McGowan ever intended to be, handle the traffic levels that it is handling? Or was it supposed to be 29th? Was it supposed to be down? Is that, is that part of our network that's considered a major?
So it is classified as a collector. Now, when it started on the west side, when it didn't go all the way through, unfortunately, back in those days, we let accesses happen on collectors we should not have. We are where we are now. And that's why as you go east, you'll notice that the houses are actually off of the side streets, the residential streets instead of McGowan. So things evolve. And unfortunately, we have one side of it that is built more like a residential street, even though it's a collector, and we have the east side that's built how it's supposed to be.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, your honor.
Go ahead.
Well, Mike, on that point, that east is different than west, I do know, notice on the west, there are, I think, two stop signs that exist, one at McGowan, I'm sorry, McGowan and 27th. And then also, I forget, the other intersecting street further to the west. I think there's another stop sign. Is it for the eastern section of McGowan, then, since it is a collector, that a design feature that is not to impede traffic with stop signs?
Correct. And I would have to look to see if it's still a collector to the west, but I do want to remind everyone that a stop sign is not a device to use to calm speed.
I, you've told me that before. Okay, then.
Okay. Other questions? It will vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to direct staff to proceed as outlined in the Traffic Advisory Committee report for the changes to McGowan Boulevard, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-22, approving the request to rezon property from SR2 suburban medium-density single-family residential to SR3 suburban medium-density single-family residential for property located east of Lucor Road and north of Artesian Road, Marion, Iowa. Craig Tobin, second consideration.
Second. Okay, it's removed and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 25-22, approving the request to rezon property from suburban medium-density single-family residential to suburban medium-density single-family residential SR3 for property located east of Lucor Road and north of Artesian Road. Discussion. May I, okay, I have a question. So when this property was was rezoned SR2, what was the reasoning or the thinking behind it? Do we know? Like, why wasn't it zoned SR3 from the beginning?
So the city, during our citywide zoning map update, we picked the SR2 zoning district based off of the preliminary plat. It was R2 zoning, which aligns with the bulk regulations, the lot width of the SR3 district.
It was, oh.
But based off of?
It aligns with the SR3?
Yes, the former R2 district does align with the lot width of the SR3 district.
SR2 now is different from what it used to be when this was zoned?
Yes, the lots are a little wider than what the former R2 was. And based off of the preliminary plat, we based it off of the lot widths.
So it's consistent, so SR3 today is consistent with what the original zoning for this would have been SR2?
Yep.
Okay, well, that's new information. Okay. Okay, anybody have questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Nicole, when, I'll say, the southern section of this general area was designed, was the field to the north, which if I, which lies between this, the subject property and where the new water department property is, was it always understood that that would be a higher density development in that, I'll just say, the vacant field?
North.
North.
I would need to look at the 2010 land use map. I do not have that image in my mind to say for certain. It was always designated as residential. But today's low intensity versus our medium intensity is looked at a little different than the 2010 comp plan that had single-family attached versus single-family detached. Today's low intensity allows for both that single-family attached and single-family detached. So it's not quite apples to apples.
Okay. But it is understood at this point that the undeveloped land to the north is of a higher density
Correct.
profile?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
So the current SR3 is same lot width or similar lot width as the former SR2?
The former R2 district, correct.
Yeah. So what's, what's changed then? I mean, in terms of, why would he want to, what's the SR3? I thought it was, he wanted SR3 so that he could have more lots.
Yes, so this rezoning request would allow for six additional lots along that northern portion. It does allow for slightly reduced lot widths than what the current SR2 district allows for. The former R2 district was what the majority of Marion was zoned as. Our next level up was more of a larger lot width. It would be more similar to today's SR1 district. And so we really didn't have that kind of in-between. So all new subdivisions were going with the R2 district, even if the lots were a little wider, they weren't hitting that R1 lot width. So with the new zoning classifications, we added in kind of that middle point, which would be now the SR2 district.
I know why I'm not, I'm just still confused because it seems, if he's, if he's able to do, have more lots under SR3, but the widths are the same. The width, the lot widths are the same.
Lot widths.
SR2, I don't.
Yeah, the preliminary plat, though, based off of how those lots were laid out, matched better with the current SR3, or the SR2 zoning district of that wider lot width, which is why we didn't zone it with the update to that lower zoning classification.
SR2 has wider lot widths than the former SR2?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
It's a lot of overlapping information.
But it's important, I think. Anyone else have anything?
No, no. I don't have anything else.
I will. Because I brought some of this up in the last meeting, so I appreciate that update because I think that answers, as the mayor said, some of the questions we were trying to figure out of why this changed when, what was the need for the change if you purchased it under this and now we're moving forward and why we have to rezon it? I still think it's, you know, it, this will probably go forward. I'm guessing on our votes, you know, here we go. But my hope is that the conversations that we're having about why these smaller lot widths are creating the same home over and over and over and over again, all the way down the street. And that continuing is going to, in the future, show us some different paths instead of, I mean, here it is. You know, they have this development, we're going to do this, it's going to be the smaller lots, and we're going to end up with it. But I would hope that the conversations we're seeing, what we saw on Tuesday with the different exploration of different types of, you know, garages in the back and what we can do. So I'm hoping that this conversation we've had for these first two readings will spark some different development discussions with things coming to us again in the future. That, I don't want to have this same conversation over and over again. I'm hoping that we will kind of change the way we're looking at things and maybe push for some innovation in what our neighborhoods are going to look like moving forward. Besides this, so that's not too crazy. My colleagues may disagree, but that's my kind of opinion on it.
I agree. And I guess my, maybe this is a discussion for another time, but at what point is that the right time to have those discussions? Is it at the preliminary plat stage or even before that? Or I don't know, like, you know, rather than after, you know, when they're ready to develop it, I mean, it's, you know, they've already invested a lot of money and stuff. So at what, at what stage is it appropriate to have those discussions? And maybe we can talk about that later, but that's the question going through my head. But, yeah.
Your Honor, the feedback to Councilwoman Menzer's point, the feedback that council provided on Tuesday was very helpful for staff and driving clarity as to what the, what the council's looking for. So as we start working on the implementation of the comp plan, that's something that will be coming before council within probably the next month or so, probably less than that. So that we can then work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on some recommendations to incorporate into the zoning code to address the points that Councilwoman Menzer just raised. Create some different land use regulations to incent diversity in the housing. How they look, how they Charlie gave a wonderful presentation on some of that. So we did take those notes. We're going to develop the recommendations, bring it back to council for feedback and formal direction of P&amp;Z. Mayor, to your question, getting that in the rulebook in our code is, that would then kind of take care of what your question was.
Make all the difference because when they, when they're buying the property, you know, they can look at the regulations and then make that decision before they put in the investment.
Correct. Yeah, the conversation, you know, the comp plan was one thing. The clarity in the direction from council on Tuesday was very helpful because that helps us make sure we got the right tools in the toolbox. And the rules, the laws in place help effectuate the vision that's identified in the comp plan and what we're hearing from you.
Okay, I think Nicole has something to add, and then we'll go to Grant and then Will.
Yeah, so talking about when should these conversations be happening, when a development comes forward, it really varies.
Um, it really varies depending on the zoning of the property. If it's a PUD, definitely needs to be happening as we're having that rezoning discussion. As you know, those PUD districts are something where we can add in a lot more information and requirements on design standards. When it comes to straight zoning, we are looking more at lot configuration. So setting certain bulk regulations on a lot width or even setbacks may help a little bit. But at the same time, the developer isn't always the one building the house. And so we really need, um, those aspects like Charlie had presented about garage locations, different things that are going to change the form of the house, um, as well as just the lot layouts.
Okay. Go to Grant and then Will.
So I, I was not here for the work session, but so correct me if I'm wrong. Fundamentally, we're allowing this particular consideration to be the catalyst for a more in-depth examination of how we, in fact, incent a variety of housing types and how that might then manifest in all of our ordinances and planning and whatever. I mean, that's the upshot of this. I would have to say that within the confines of our current system, if the northern area that's undeveloped is ultimately deemed to be of a higher density, I think there is a value here of what has been proposed as somewhat of a transition. And, um, so it's on that basis, I'm, I still, um, within our current system, am in favor of this.
Well, Nicole said it much better than I would say technically wise, what I was going to say. So I totally agree with her that the width of the lot or the size of the lot is not what's technically determining the type of home that's being built because you can do multiple things on smaller lots. But what the problem is, is that we still have that, all the developers that are building the same thing. And that's why we have a lot of that is because it's, that's what the demand is. I mean, they're going to build what the demand is. The mindset of the community needs to change into different types of buildings or different types of homes too, not just, and, and that's not just changing the lot size. That's changing everything that has to do with what Nicole just said before. So, um, I had one other point that I lost, but anyway.
Well, I, I think, I mean, I, I have to disagree a little bit because I think lot width does make, does impact what kind of, how your, the house is configured. When we built our house, we wanted an end-load garage, and there were four lots in the whole city that would accommodate that. The house we, we, the, the lot we bought, we still had to go, we, we couldn't build a ranch. We had to go up because of the width. Uh, you know, the width does matter.
If you go a larger home, a smaller home?
Well, but we're talking about standards for all, all types of houses. So I, I, I think it does matter. But I'm, I'm hopeful that what Charlie's going to come up with is going to help with that. I, you know, um, I think we need to be having conversations with the developers in any case about what we, what we would hope to see about them playing a role in how we are shaping this community, that they have a role in that. And it's not just about finding what sells easily and just replicating it. Because when you don't give people the option, then it's easy to say this is what people want. When they don't have the other options to choose from, then you can say, this is what people are buying. That's what they want, so I'm going to continue building it. It's, it's the easy route. And I think we still have to have those conversations with, with, with the builders to encourage them to be part of the solutions to what we see as challenges and in terms of building and shaping the city that we want to end up with. And, uh, and, and encourage them, encouraging them to be part of the team and be part of the solutions. They can still do well and make money and, and sell houses. Uh, but also be, um, helping to, um, fulfill the vision that, that we all have for, for, for the community we want to build, so.
That was the point that I forgot.
Well, good.
We need to meet with the builders and discuss this, yes.
Sarah.
And as a follow-up, that's it. I, I guess from counsel to the staff perspective, I'm hoping what Charlie's developing helps that because I think it's, the question is, do you, does, does this, does the team have the tools needed to be having those discussions? If you don't, how can the council be a partner in, in those conversations to ensure that those tools are available to have? Um, so you don't feel like you're stuck with us wanting one thing and they want another, and you don't have the tools, you need to make it work? So I guess that's the question. We don't know unless you tell us.
Yeah, we, the clarity and the discussion on Tuesday was great. Uh, so we got you. Uh, we're working with Charlie and the staff to kind of formulate some points to, so we can further refine that direction and then take it to P and Z and, and do the work. So we have those tools.
And I have to-
Then we can, sorry, so then we can continue to have those conversations with the developers and the builders because without the tools to reinforce kind of the vision or to articulate the vision of what, what we as a community are looking for, kind of, most builders will work with us, but if they don't have to. So it just, it helps.
I have to point out that, you know, we should all feel good about that we have, we're at a level that we can have these discussions, and these are the challenges. It's, you know, these are the things we're, we're thinking about, and we can, we can have these types of higher-level discussions. So I, I think it's something we should all feel good about. It's a, it's a definite level up from where we've been, that we're engaging in these types of. This is very positive, and it's very good to have these discussions and, and to, talk about in that greater detail about what we're doing here and what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish in the community, so. Great discussion, thank you all. Any other comments before we vote? All right. All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three, amending chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to sign regulations. Second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three, amending chapter three forty of the Code of Ordinances related to sign regulations. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding amendments to chapter three forty of the Code of Ordinances related to district uses and specific use standards pertaining to gas stations. Do you have a presentation?
Yes, we have Charlie on the line.
Oh, Charlie's here, okay.
Yep, virtually, he's here tonight just to do a brief, um, review of Tuesday's discussion.
Charlie, are you with us?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Welcome.
I will. Yeah, I'll do share screen here. Oh, I don't have permission.
We have the same slides from Tuesday on the screen, so if you just tell us when to-
Perfect, okay, great. Um, yeah, so as we talked about on Tuesday, the request at hand, what is a request for updating the standards for gas stations, particularly how they are permitted along Tower Terrace Road? Uh, we had held, um, a number of different, uh, input throughout the process, really starting back with the comprehensive plan. A lot of input on, on needing a gas station on the north side of town. We held an open house in March of this year with some preliminary, um, ideas for thinking about the design of gas stations, uh, in this area. And then, uh, actually, uh, had some work sessions with you and the Planning Commission to discuss different alternatives, um, for working with gas stations along Tower Terrace Road. Uh, we then went back and made a formal, uh, a more formal request, or I should say amendment to Planning Commission. I've, uh, recommended, uh, uh, an approval that is before you this evening. Um, so just as a reminder, uh, there are a, a lot of existing gas station standards uh, that are applied citywide today. Uh, that includes things like, uh, they all require a conditional use permit. Uh, fuel pumps have to be, uh, located away from, twenty feet away from lot lines. Uh, the design of the building and canopies have to meet the design standards, uh, in the city today for materials and, and other items. The building, uh, associated with the station has to be in front with the, the pumps, uh, the fueling portion in the rear of that building, as well as a, a heavy landscaping and buffering treatments when the ga, uh, gas station is next to residential uses. So all of that, uh, still applies in, uh, this code amendment, uh, text amendment here this evening. Though, the one I, uh, the one item that is proposed in this text amendment for change is related to properties within six hundred feet of Tower Terrace Road. And, uh, after discussion with the Planning and, uh, Zoning Commission, what is before you this evening is that within six hundred feet of Tower Terrace Road, a gas station would be required to get a conditional use permit uh, and would only, uh, and there would be one allowed, uh, per intersection at Albert Net Road, Winslow Road, uh, Thirty-Fifth Street, which is only the portion within the neighborhood of Indian Creek, uh, PUD, and then the Highway thirteen intersections. Uh, that all the other design standards would still apply, uh, to that uh, as, as they do today citywide. A couple other, uh, design standard-related items to the design of the, uh, each of those four locations itself. Access would be not allowed on Tower Terrace Road. So there'd have to, direct access would have to come from a side, uh, street. Uh, maximum of sixteen vehicles could be fueled at one time, as we talked about on Tuesday in a little detail. That is a, a maximum, not a, uh, not a requirement. So you, uh, stations could provide fewer than, uh, sixteen vehicle service stalls. And then there must be an associate building, uh, with the gas station use, uh, up to ten thousand square feet that provides, uh, sales of convenience goods, retail goods, uh, things like that. So that is, that was, uh, the recommendation of the Plains Zoning Commission. I'm happy to answer any further questions on the text amendment.
Questions for Charlie? Or, or I guess we can do that, uh, in the motion. Thanks, Charlie. At this point, the public hearing is open. Uh, if anyone's here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll, um, ask the staff if we received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Okay, Nicole, have you?
Um, we have not received any comments regarding this.
Okay, thank you. Note that for the record, and we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four, amending chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to district uses and specific use standards pertaining to gas stations, city of Marion. This will be the initial consideration.
Second.
To move in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four, amending chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to district uses and specific use standards pertaining to gas stations. This is the initial consideration. Any discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to point out for all of council that based on the conversation on Tuesday night, I did place directions for how to propose and approve ordinances with an amendment so that we don't disrupt the sequence of the three readings. Everyone should have one at their spot.
Thank you for that. We all got there, got it. Okay, discussion? Yes, Sarah.
Because I brought it up on Tuesday, I'll bring it up today. So I know we need to move forward. I'm still not convinced I don't like that third option, um, that wouldn't put it by residential, but would allow a little more flexibility and a little more opportunity. But I'm not sure that I am that adamant that it's not that I won't vote for it tonight. But I do say I kind of like that option if we had an alternative and maybe if we'd had some more conversation, um, earlier, but still thinking about this way. So that's just my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Any other, go ahead.
So just, uh, that I'm clear on this. The current language of the, uh, ordinance specifies how many pumps?
Sixteen.
Six.
Uh, eight. Yeah, so it would be eight pumps or, um, or rather sixteen vehicles that could be fueled that, at one, any one time.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Up to.
Right. Up to that much. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Sarah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, did, we want to have any more discussion? Or is there any more conversation that needs to occur around? Should the location at Highway thirteen be considered, uh, with more option, a larger option at that location than the others? Do we, does that get carved out? Um, just because it's, uh, two, what would be considered two major intersections? Again, don't, not stuck on this enough that I'd hold anything up, but I'm kind of tossing that out there or maybe asking if we change our minds somewhere along the line here, if that can be opened up to a larger location because it's on a commercial, major commercial intersection.
My understanding, and we can ask Kara this, but, I mean, on a case-by-case basis, if the, if something came forward and they wanted that corner and wanted to accommodate a larger, uh, a larger, uh, facility, that, that that could be done?
Yes, and we can always amend any of our zoning codes to increase, decrease. That's always an option out there too. So if in a few weeks we realize that maybe there's something we want to change about this, even as short as then, we could, could do a proposed amendment, so.
You do have three readings. So to, to further elaborate on Kara's point, if there's a, if there's a desire to continue the discussion and, and make an amendment, uh, for, during the second reading, you would have that ability as well.
I guess my, you know, I would be more concerned about it, but, uh, I'll reiterate my comments from Tuesday is that I, I, I don't know that I've seen any gas stations in our city that have anywhere even near sixteen. Uh, yeah, sixteen cars. I mean, sixteen would still be large, I think, even if you drive down First Avenue and you count the number of, um, uh, pumps at, at those big gas stations, you know, really, you don't see one that, that, that's this large. Yeah, so, but I, I, we could always amend it, it's, you know, for that, for that particular request, right, at some point? Yeah.
Yes, and if that was a, something that council wanted to consider again before the third reading, because it's such a small change, I would not consider that to be a material change that would start us over at the first reading.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if, um, if we continue through as it was, it was all approved, done, and a year from now, a developer comes and says, I want to have ten pumps, or whatever, nine, we could look at that and say, okay, maybe we need to adjust this based on the location.
Makes sense.
And adjust it at that point, looking at the current environment.
Absolutely.
And, and by, I'll just, sorry, by, uh, ten pumps, you would need twenty vehicles, twenty cars increasing, okay?
Okay, good discussion. Any other comments, discussion, questions? Are you ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Again, I appreciate the discussion and the high level of, um, thought going into this entire process. I think our city's well- I think our city is well served by us, uh, by us having these types of conversations and thinking in that greater detail. About about these these matters and just not taking things for granted, so. Appreciate it. Thanks to everyone. Uh, at this time, we have the second public forum, which is a time set aside from any uh, comments from any member of the public on any topic. Anyone here to address council, please come forward. Okay. We'll. We'll close that part of the meeting uh, and proceed to council comments. We'll start with uh, council member Grant, tell us about your vacation.
There, I need, I need a sip of coffee for this. Um, well, after getting caught up in the United uh, Airlines um, international uh. Traffic stop um, because of a technical glitch. Um, and spending uh, four to six additional hours in O'Hare. Um, I had the opportunity to travel uh, several um, city locations in and around the Baltic States. Um, Tallinn, Estonia uh, was the furthest east. Um, went to Bergen, went to Oslo, went to um, uh, several other locations inclusive of uh, Denat, Denansk, uh, Poland. And uh, one of the things that I, um, we were talking about a variety of housing. Well, in those locations, you see very, very old. Um, you know, uh, sixteenth, seventeenth century construction, and then um. Immediately adjacent to it, there is modernistic construction. And that includes not only office, um, and I would say uh, downtown uh, spaces, but also you see that out in the more, I'll say suburban. Areas, um, very modern, right up next to uh, very old and um, traditional. Um, and also on a variety of lot sizes, so I don't ever expect that kind of variety here in Marion. But it is a model visually to be thinking about, and so our conversation um, kind of resonates with. Uh, that part of my takeaway for traveling around for two weeks. Um. Earlier, um, the mayor with the proclamation regarding the duratio, so um. I was on council just ever so briefly uh, before uh, the duratio. I was appointed in May of twenty twenty, and the duratio happened in mid-August. And I thought that was a lot of fun, and we were also in the middle of COVID ramping up. Um, but what is important uh, from my perspective is since the duratio. What I have uh, sensed in a variety of ways is our response to the lessons that came out of that. Our new public works facility is born out of the thinking of things that we experienced in during the duratio. We needed hardened facilities for critical um, services to operate out of. Because of the events that can happen here in the great Midwest, whether it be a duratio or whether it be tornadic activity. The other thing that I s- I've seen and witnessed over um, the time since the duratio. And I think it's corresponded with uh, our own internal leadership changes. And as a result of that, relationships with our surrounding governmental entities, the counties, Cedar Rapids and and our other neighboring communities. Um, that. There has been a sharpening of, I think, within Marion, the governance surrounding delivery of service. Um, Chief Fagan, you put together the the very robust um, standards of cover documentation that was, I I. Uh, was included in our packet, and there's a lot there to um, you know, to take measure from. And allow that to propel us um, to be able to provide emergency service to our. Uh, to our uh, citizens, to our residents. It's examples like that in terms of what we're doing uh, to be of service to residents. Now to the big point, this may not be at all. Um, a- appropriate, but it is a personal comment and something that I want to share with everybody. And I thought a lot about this while I was away in the Baltic States. And that is, um, I do intend to run for reelection this fall. Um, we have too much work to do. Going forward, and I really would like to, uh, certainly with the lessons that I've gained from working with Randy over the, over the uh. The past several years on various issues, I think there is an importance for a continuity of governance for what the city has before it. I would say that you cannot come into a municipal government, government role or a leader, um. Legislative role and think that you can only have one concern. Because the concerns of the city are many, and they may not align with a personal issue that uh, one thinks is the most important thing in life. You have to give equal treatment to a variety of issues that can confront the municipality and the residents. And it's that challenge that I find satisfying, so that's one reason why I've decided to run again.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Okay, Sarah.
I also traveled this past week.
You did?
Um, but you're not as far as Grant went, I just drove seventeen hours across the United States out to Wyoming, but talking about housing. Like Grant was, it, we we were in Jackson, Wyoming, and uh, Teton County, which Jackson, Wyoming is in, is one of the most expensive. Counties in the United States. And you'll drive down a neighborhood street and you'll have homes that are fifty, sixty, seventy years old. Or maybe even older, um. And then you'll have a home that someone bought, knocked down. And built a modern home right next to, right in the middle of all these homes, so there's quite a mix of homes out there. And the cost, I mean, the, the two hundred thousand dollar house here is one point five million there. Um, and then you'll, you'll see these homes that are sixty years old, that are original home and, you know, that are one point two million, and then. Right next door is a modern home that got built a few years ago, that's five or six million, so it's, it's quite the, the difference driving around those neighborhoods in here, but. Anyway, that's all, I was just, he was talking about the housing stock in Europe and. Housing stock in Jackson is quite. Quite different too.
Yeah, Brady?
Well, man, nothing, thanks.
Okay, uh, for my part, I'll just uh. Well, I'll reiterate a little bit of what Grant said in terms of, um, I think the duratio, um, although it was devastating. Think a lot came out of that, and it has made us stronger, has made us, our our team much more prepared. Our emergency response is definitely uh, more, uh, we're more uh, prepared. Um, and um. I I just think it's made us, it's brought us closer together and made us a stronger community and showed us, shown us what what we can accomplish. Um, so some positive things came out of that uh, very heartbreaking. Moment in our city's history. Um. And then I, the only other thing I wanted to share was last Saturday, um, I uh, signed up for the office hours at the. At the farmer's market, and uh, it was just the most uh, fun morning. Uh, because one after another, I was meeting families that came up and said. We just moved to Marion. One family said, we're your newest uh, residents, we just moved here on Monday from Indiana. They had just moved here that week from Indiana. Uh, and they were so excited to be coming to Marion, and they couldn't believe the the community that that they have found here. And then others were from Arizona, California, Pennsylvania, um, Virginia. It was just like a a a list of, a a growing list of families that just came up and told me about that they had recently moved here and where they, you know, where they came from and. Why they moved here, we'd had great discussions, and they were just all so excited about the the community. Um, and then today I spent some time um, responding to some emails and and. Concerns of of residents, and it just highlighted for me the importance of continuing to communicate. When the city's doing so much, and we're so busy, and there's lots of change and things happening. Uh, it's important for us to not just assume that people understand what we're doing and why. Uh, and that it's important to bring them along and to keep explaining to them. Um, the reasons for our decisions and helping them to see that our decisions are not just made in a vacuum or spur of the moment, or because it was somebody's. Opinion, or someone thought it was a good idea that these things are planned. Well, everything that we're doing is planned, it's thought out in advance, it's well founded, it's based on lots of uh, detailed. Uh, work and studies and and planning. Um, and I think that when people understand that, that's how we earn the respect of the community, that's how we earn that that great trust rating that we have with the community. Um, so it just sort of was highlighted for me today and and. Uh, you know, I I do periodically because of my crazy schedule, you know, I have to. I I save all these for one day and I re- I respond to a bunch of communications at the same time, and that today was that day, and it just. I really thought a lot about um. The importance of communication and really have, we've come a long ways in that, in that communication area. Um, and we just have to keep that top of mind as we're busy doing what we're doing to also be. Um, open to communicating with the community and patient with them. And helping them to understand and to realize, because a lot of times they don't realize all the work that goes into. One action that they see the results of, and they may have their opinion on that, and no two people. You know, will agree on every, you know, on everything, and everyone's entitled to their opinion, but there's one set of facts. And that's what we have to keep sharing with people is the facts and the facts and the reasons. And our found, uh, the foundation for our reasoning and our, and our processes and our decisions. Um, and I think that that's of utmost importance as we continue to grow and to get busier and to do bigger and better things, so. Thank you all for your hard work, appreciate everyone's uh, time this evening, and. We are adjourned.